Welcome to our annual principal and teacher of the year reception. Before we honor these special guests, I would like to direct your attention to the walls of the atrium. This month, we have beautiful artwork from Mont Leon Junior High School. These beautiful pieces were created under the direction of teacher Ms. Tanya Hinden. And now, to honor our special guests, the Mandeville High School Choral Ensemble, under the direction of choir director Martha Atchison, will entertain us. Please welcome Mandeville High School.
(Applause)
Good evening. My name is Meredith Mendez. I'm Director of Communications for the St. Tammany Parish Public School System. I am so honored tonight to be here to be able to introduce to you our principals of the year and our teachers of the year. I would like to start by introducing you to some special honorees that we have here with us tonight, or special guests, rather, our school board members. We'll start with school board president Jack Lupe. Vice President Mary K. Bellisario. Beth Heinz. Mike Durman. (Applause) Charles Harrell. Rowan Tipton. Ron Betancourt. Ronnie Panks. (Applause) And Ray Alfred. Also here tonight with us are Superintendent Trey Foles. And Assistant Superintendent Cheryl Larabee. Bill Brady. (Applause) And Pete Javia. Throughout the year, it is a wonderful experience working with these educators and learning about their devotion to our students and to our schools. So let's start tonight with our principals of the year. From Honey Island Elementary, Mary Jane Smith. Please come up. Mary Jane has a Masters of Education from Southeastern. She began her education career 22 years ago. She was once the Slidell Elks Lodge Teacher of the Year. And Mary Jane is not only our district teacher of the year, but she went on to be the Region Two Principal of the Year, as well as a state finalist. So let's give Mary Jane a round of applause. In the middle school junior high category, Susan Patan from Lake Harbor Middle School. Please come up. Susan has her Masters plus 30 from Southeastern. She began her career 24 years ago. She won the Black Boards Initiative Award, and she is very active with the Kiwanis. So let's congratulate Susan on her success. Our high school principal of the year is Dr. Mike Peterson from North Shore High School. Mike has a PhD in Educational Leadership and Administration and Supervision. He began his career 34 years ago and became principal of North Shore High in 2000. He is active in his community and his church, and in addition to teaching, he was also once a coach, helping students to learn football, soccer, baseball, track, and weightlifting. A round of applause for Dr. Peterson. Now, let's move on to our teachers of the year. First up from Bonny Coe Elementary is Suzanne Pishon. Suzanne has her Masters from Southeastern. She has been a teacher for 15 years. She serves as her school's retreat planning leader and is the curriculum designer for the third grade ELA gifted program. Let's give a round of applause to Suzanne Pishon. From Lake Harbor Middle School, Mandy Warren is our teacher of the year. Mandy has her Masters from Northwestern State University. She has been a teacher for nine years. Mandy is not only our teacher of the year, but she was also named the State of Louisiana Teacher of the Year. And she is very busy. She serves on many committees, including being the grade level chairperson and the yearbook advisor. So congratulations to Mandy Warren. And last, but certainly not least, is Dawn Castleberry from North Shore High School. Dawn has her Masters degree from Southeastern. She has been teaching for 10 years, all of it in St. Tammany. She serves on North Shore High's literacy committee and the design team, among other things. So let's give a round of applause to Dawn Castleberry. I would like to thank all of our honorees for being here with us tonight. We hope that you all will stay and enjoy some food brought to us by our food services supervisor, Pat Ferris, and her staff. Also want to thank again the Mandeville High Show Choir for our entertainment this evening. And the board meeting will begin at 7:00. Thank you all for being here. (Applause)
All right, welcome everyone to our school board meeting for October 11th, 2012. Row call please, Ms. Weathers.
Mr. Lupe.
Here.
Mr. Henigan. Mrs. Heinz. Mr. Durman.
Here.
Mr. Harrell.
Here.
Mrs. Tipton.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Sealy.
Present.
Mrs. Mullitt.
Mr. Betancourt.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Mr. Panks.
Here.
Mr. Lamarck.
Here.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Mrs. Bellisario.
Thank you.
We'll have the invocation and prayers from Ms. Heinz, please.
Would you please bow your heads with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we gather this evening confident that our students, teachers, and administrators have worked hard to learn and grow in their studies and profession during this first nine weeks of school. We are thankful for good health and good minds. Be with us this evening as we come to make important decisions that affect our school system. We also ask that you keep our board member, Robin Mullitt's grandmother, in our thoughts and prayers this evening as she is ill. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Recognition of visitors, anyone, any board members? All right, thank you. Okay, first, only agenda, teachers of the year, Superintendent Foles.
Thank you, Mr. Lupe. Board members, tonight is one of the nights that we always look forward to as a school system, and we have some really high-quality educators that we want to honor here tonight. And first, we're going to start with our teacher of the year, and the first teacher of the year comes to us from the elementary level, and that's Ms. Suzanne Pishon from Bonny Coe Elementary. She has been a teacher in our school system since 1996. She is a member of the Louisiana Association of Computer Using Educators, and she ties technology into her classroom on many different levels. She's also been named the Els Club Outstanding Young Educator, as well as the Els Club Teacher of the Year. Please take a look at Channel 13's video highlighting Mrs. Pishon.
One look around Suzanne Pishon's classroom, and you'd say, "It's busy." And she must be too.
She is busy around the school. She's always looking out for the needs of not only her students, but the faculty and staff here at Bonny Coe.
She is so busy trying to do things for other people. I'm probably too busy, but that's okay. I kind of run on adrenaline.
And it's that rush she carries over into her classroom teaching.
They're working on computers, they're working on iPods, they're at the Pemathium Board.
I would say that first and foremost, she is dedicated to the art of teaching and to what her students learn, but just as valuable as the academics is the character that she instills within her students.
She's very supportive of her students and their needs and their interests, and in return, her students are highly engaged in their activities.
A combination that earned Mrs. Pishon the St. Tammany Parish Elementary Teacher of the Year award, which totally caught her off-guard.
I was so shocked because it's such an honor and a privilege because I love working in this parish. I'm not from here originally, but it's just been so wonderful being here.
Yet, her principal knows all too well the contributing factor in her receiving this award.
Every day that Ms. Pishon comes to work, you can see her love and compassion for every child at Bonny Coe.
Tiger Edwards, Channel 13.
Board members, I'm proud to present to you Ms. Suzanne Pishon, the elementary teacher of the year for St. Tammany Parish.
Thank you very much. And just as I said in the video, it's just such a blessing and an honor because teaching is a calling on my life. I feel like I've been called to do this, and I love being with those kids, and it's so fun to see them up there, and I love working with all the teachers. Just those were two of my best friends up there who got to see April Owens and Claire Abney. So they're just such a blessing and such a support. So thank you so much for this honor.
I know Suzanne's administrators are here, back in the back. Thank y'all for being here. Also want to recognize her family. Y'all want to stand up, family members? Some of you may recognize Ms. Pat Pishon, who's a former board member, and her husband as well was a former board member, Mr. Frank Pishon. Happy to have him with us tonight. And Kalen Pishon, her husband was on my basketball team at Salmon High School a few years ago, so it's great to see him again as well. He can grow a beard now, he couldn't do that in high school. So thank y'all for being here.
All right.
Next up, in the middle school category, we're honoring Mandy Warren from Lake Harbor Middle School. Mandy is not only St. Tammany Parish's Teacher of the Year, she was also chosen as the Teacher of the Year for the entire state of Louisiana. Mandy's a product of our school system. She comes from a family of educators, and her mom is one of, is a former principal in our school system. She is recipient of the Kelly Cook Foundation Grant, and also is a state finalist, one of two people, state finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Science and Mathematics Teaching. If she wins that, and I told her that we really want her to, we get a trip to Washington, DC. So I don't want to put pressure on her, but we're counting on that trip to the White House, so we'll see how that goes. Take a look at Channel 13 for Mandy.
You get an extra turn, how is that?
For Lake Harbor Elementary teacher Mandy Warren, the most important aspects of her job are her students, but it never hurts to get a little recognition for a job well-done along the way.
Ms. Warren is such a valuable teacher and asset at Lake Harbor.
Which question are you trying to find the answer to right now?
And this year, that passion for teaching earned Ms. Warren a spot among Louisiana's elite educators when her Teacher of the Year bid took her all the way to the state level, becoming Louisiana's middle school teacher of the year.
She is one of a kind. She is a fantastic teacher.
I need to give that balance on the side.
When you go into her room, you can see the learning take place, you can see the excitement, you can see all the students know that they are cherished by her.
It just comes down to getting to know them, and just to learn about them personally, and they're all just these unique little people, different little personalities.
Ms. Warren's ability to impart wisdom is not just limited to her students, however.
Personally, she's my mentor. When I went through my graduate program, she was my mentor, and she's mentored several of the teachers here throughout their graduate work. So we always knew the true talents that she had, and it's exciting to see that she's getting the recognition, and other people are seeing how truly blessed we are in this community to have Ms. Warren.
And it is because of this community, Ms. Warren says, that she was able to become the educator that she is today.
There are so many great teachers in St. Tammany. I just want to be a representation of that, because what I do is what so many other teachers do. It's who's taught me to do what I do. I have the best teachers here in St. Tammany.
She's a natural teacher. She was born to be a teacher, and you can just see it in her classroom. And it's so exciting to have a teacher who you know is so good to be recognized at the state level.
We're going to compare, we're going to pick two planets to compare.
Red Shark, Channel 13.
What diagram do I use?
Board members, Amanda.
I just want to say thank you. This is such an honor. I've been so humbled by this whole experience, but it's really taught me that I am in the right profession, and it is what I was meant to do. And just seeing my kids up there, and my colleagues and my principal, it just, it means a lot to me, and I want to thank you so much for this.
Student here, yes, stand up, congratulate, thank y'all for being here. Stand up, the minister's got flowers. (Applause) Any of her family want to stand up too? Thank you for being here, Kim and family members. Our next award winner is from the high school level, and it's Dawn Castleberry from North Shore High School. Dawn has her Masters degree in Curriculum Instruction. She's been teaching in 2001 and has a concentration in math gifted education. She serves on numerous committees at North Shore High School, including the literacy committee, as well as the school design team. Take a look at Channel 13 and Dawn Castleberry.
Dawn Castleberry teaches honors in gifted math at North Shore High, and this parish high school teacher of the year will stop at nothing to make math come alive for her students.
I was in the movie theaters a couple, two weeks ago, and I watched the Superman, the new Superman movie preview, and there was a sonic boom, you know, you could see the sonic boom cloud following Superman as he's flying through the air. (Sound of explosion) So I was very excited to tell my students that I had seen the new Superman preview and saw one of our applications that we had talked about in Algebra II of the sonic boom, because it's a hyperbolic application.
Pointing out a sonic boom curve in a Superman movie is one way that Castleberry connects difficult math concepts to everyday life for her students, a practice that makes her a very special teacher.
The most positive thing that she does with them is she influences her students to do better. It's not a push or a drive, it's an influence that she has, and that's, I think that's what makes her so special.
Castleberry not only loves teaching math, but loves the interactions with her students.
What's so great about teaching is that I have the ability to influence them, both academically, but then also just to be a role model for them, what's going on in their lives, and listen to them.
An excellent teacher and positive role model are just two of the reasons why Dawn Castleberry has been selected as this year's Parish High School Teacher of the Year.
We're just so well-pleased and glad that she's recognized for the job that she has done so well. Board members, audience, Ms. Dawn Castleberry.
I'd like to say thank you for the recognition. It means so much to me. Teaching is just number one. It's, I wake up as a teacher and it's just, it, I'm, thank you. I started when I was 21, and so to go now, I've had so many wonderful colleagues and administrators just to teach me so many good things, and I love watching them and learning from them, and I need to thank my students because they've helped mold me to be the teacher I am today, and thank you guys.
Okay, next, only agenda will be the principals of the year, Superintendent Foles.
Thank you, Mr. Lupe. Tonight, we are proud and honored to recognize our three principals of the year, and the first one we have is for the elementary level, and that's Ms. Mary Jane Smith. Wait a minute, did I do, I didn't do the family members yet after Dawn, so my mind is like, family members, please stand, be recognized, thank you.
All right.
And Ms. Peterson, our principal's here as well, thank you for being here. And as I was saying, at the elementary level, Mary Jane Smith from Honey Island Elementary is our principal of the year. Mary Jane went on to become the Region Two Principal of the Year. is our Principal of the Year. Mary Jane went on to become the Region Two Principal of the Year, as well as a state finalist. She has taught in the classroom for many years. She came to us from Georgia and then Texas, and then she started with us in 1990, moved away for a little while, got smart and returned in 1998, and has been a teacher or administrator at six different schools in our school system. I think she's finally found her home, and I know the teachers and students at Honey Island are glad to have her there. And take a look at this video that's been put together from Mary Jane Smith from Honey Island.
This year's St. Tammany Parish Elementary Principal of the Year prepares her work at home with one thing in mind.
Every day, I can't wait to jump out of bed and see the students of Honey Island. I love them like they're my own children.
Mrs. Smith loves coming to work and sees Honey Island as a fun place to work because she loves children. She loves spending time with them. She loves the positive interaction.
She does have a love for children. She genuinely cares about Honey Island and about the children and the staff here.
With her attention drawn to her students and staff, Mrs. Smith is able to motivate those around her.
She inspires us all to be better teachers, to be better people.
Mrs. Smith is an extremely hard worker. She's a role model for the whole Honey Island community.
I love my job. It is such a fabulous place to work. And Mary Jane has worked really hard to build a community.
A school community that embraced its leader on her accomplishment.
Just to have been named Principal of the Year for the district was awesome, but the way that my faculty and staff received that and ran with it was just the best gift ever.
And there was a little lanyard to go with that award.
I did receive word from Mr. Foles that I had been named Region Two Principal of the Year. And that just was icing on the cake.
A cake that this principal says should be shared with everyone at Honey Island Elementary.
At Honey Island, teamwork is so important. And I share this award with all of the people here.
Tiger Edwards, Channel 13.
Our elementary school Principal of the Year for St. Tammany Parish, Mary Jane Smith.
I do like cake, and icing makes it even better. Like, that's kind of crazy, watching yourself up there. But I do, I knew way back when I was a little girl that I was going to be a teacher. And it's just, like someone said earlier, it's just a calling in my heart. And I want to influence my community, my teachers, my students, their parents, that we all make a positive, or can make a positive impact on people. And I love it. Thank y'all for giving me the opportunity, for allowing me to be a principal at a super-duper school. And I share this honor with them. My family is awesome. They've just, you know, been with me every step of the way. But I'm just blessed to be here in St. Tammany Parish, the best parish in the school, in the state. And I thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Want to thank her family for being here as well. I know over there, we got some of her husband right here. Thank y'all for being here. Sweet. I know it is funny to sit back here and hear all the moans and groans of the people that are winning awards when they see themselves on TV like that. In the middle junior high category, I am happy to honor and recognize tonight Ms. Susan Potan from Lake Harbor Middle School. Susan's been with our school system since 1988. She has a master's of education plus 30 hours. She has been named a PTA Educator of Distinction, and was also the St. Tammany PTA Principal of the Year. Before becoming a principal, she taught fourth and fifth grade. And let's take a look at Susan Potan, Channel 13's video.
As any principal will tell you, their work is never done. From the morning drop-offs to the late-night functions, they oversee it all. And that is exactly why Parish Principal of the Year Susan Potan is so special to the faculty and students at Lake Harbor.
She lives for this school. I mean, she is here early in the morning, late at night, on the weekends. She will do anything for any student in the school, any teacher at the school. Just like in her blood.
Lake Harbor is just such a special place for me. And the teachers here and the parents here are what make up Lake Harbor. You know, it's not me. It's not all about me. It's everything that's here. It's the community. It's the culture of the school. It's a very positive environment, which we have created here at Lake Harbor.
And it's that positive environment that strengthens the students' ability to learn.
She is a kids-first person, which is why this school does so well. You know, at the end of the day, it's all about what the kids are getting and how they're getting it.
She's so sweet and caring, and she really wants the best for each student, and she will go out of her way. Students who are in a hard time, they can come see her in the office. She helps them work toward rewards if they really need that extra incentive. She just goes the extra mile.
Ms. Potan is quick to point out that she's merely part of a larger community of educators in the parish who have set the bar at a high level.
Of course, I've had some great mentors coming up through my years, especially in St. Tammany. I began here with Ms. Araby when we opened the school, and I was assistant principal when she was principal. So I've learned a lot from her.
A sentiment her teachers now echo about her.
She is just so dedicated. I mean, she's a teacher herself, and I don't think she forgets that either.
There's a lot of pride here at Lake Harbor. Everybody kind of, you know, feels it in here. We are a really good school, and we think it's a direct result of the leadership that we have in Ms. Potan. She's the glue that holds this place together.
Red Sharp, Channel 13.
Board members and audience, I'm happy to recognize Ms. Susan Potan.
Thank you. This truly is an honor for me as well. And kind of as Mary Jane said, I've always, always wanted to be a teacher, and became a teacher, and still love being a teacher at Lake Harbor. And this award would not be, I can't not accept this award without thanking my staff and the parents and the students at my school, because they are really, really are what make Lake Harbor, what makes Lake Harbor the school that it is. Thanks again.
And I know her assistant principal Nicole is here with her, supporting her. Thank you for being here. And now on to our high school winner, and that is Dr. Mike Peterson from North Shore High School. Dr. Peterson began teaching and coaching in our school system in 1976. He has his PhD in Educational Leadership from the University of Southern Mississippi, has served as a board member of the Louisiana Association of Principals, and has also been named his Principal of the Year two other times. He also was a coach, including being named his Head Football Coach of the Year three times in his prior life here in our school system. Tonight, we want to honor and recognize him, and take a look at what Channel 13 has for Dr. Mike Peterson.
Mike Peterson, Parish Principal of the Year, sees the relationships he develops with those at North Shore High as one of the most rewarding and important aspects of his job.
It's the relationships, relationships with the students, with the teachers, with the staff. You know, we have, you know, if you sifted everything out of a life, the thing of greatest value would be the relationship. And that's what drives me here.
Connecting with these young people is something that Dr. Peterson does on a regular basis.
Every morning practically when I walk into campus, the library is the first thing you see as you enter the door. And he is standing in front of it, welcoming all of our students as they come in the door.
His involvement extends way beyond developing and maintaining relationships. It's also about meeting the daily challenges of a high school principal.
You know, when we were in, working in our graduate school, they told us that being a principal was something that incurred a great deal of brevity, fragmentation, and constant change. And that sounded like a recipe for me, because I like change. I like the adjustments. I like to be in the planning aspects of making, you know, things work in the midst of change. And so for that, I'm grateful, because there's never a day that's like any other.
And it's this positive attitude that has landed this leader as Parish High School Principal of the Year.
We were very excited for him and enthusiastic about him being chosen as Principal of the Year. We feel like it's a great honor for our schools being the spotlight, and for our principal to get the recognition that he deserves.
I'm humbled by the selection. I really have a great deal of respect for my colleagues. And I know that the other administrators nominate and vote for that person. And I just want to thank my colleagues and just tell them that, you know, a selection from them is an honor for me.
The high school Principal of the Year from St. Tammany Parish, Dr. Mike Peterson from North Shore High.
I use the word relationships, and I'm very humbled and very thankful for the relationships that I've developed with all the people in this, many of the people in this room, and certainly with the people at North Shore High School. We've been, I think Mr. Harrell said the other day, he says, you know, you're the smartest man in St. Tammany Parish. But then I found out he says that to everybody. But, you know, and I corrected him, and I said, no, I'm the most blessed person in St. Tammany Parish. And that I realize every day. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lube, if I could, let me thank Channel 13. You know, a couple of years ago, we used to stand up here and kind of read off a sheet, and then we decided to go to the videos. And it sure is not a lot nicer. So Melody and Channel 13, thank you for your efforts for that as well.
Thank you, Mel.
And if I could, let me thank Meredith Mendez for organizing and running these two programs, and I appreciate her efforts making sure everybody's in the right place and doing the right thing. So thank you for that. And you know, Mr. Lube, I think, you know, we deal with a lot of stuff as a central office and as a board members. But when you have nights like tonight, and you have that Mandeville Show choir performing, and then you see these three Teachers of the Year, and then you see the three Principals of the Year, you know the St. Tammany Parish public school system is in really good shape, and something that we should all be very proud of. And as Mike said, blessed every day to work here. So I congratulate the six people that we honor tonight, thanking what they mean to our school system, and thanking them about how they represent all the great teachers, as well as principals in our school system. So congratulations to you. Thank you for everything you do.
All right, congratulations to all of you. Very proud to have you all in our system. Okay, next we have the National School Lunch Week, and that will be Mr. Bill Brady for some remarks, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lube. We are definitely blessed in this parish by the six people that we've honored tonight. We're also, I believe, blessed by our award-winning school lunch program. It's nationally recognized. We're thankful for the hard work of Pat Ferris and her administrative staff, and the hundreds of technicians, lunchroom technicians and managers that work each and every day to provide very wholesome, nutritional, and healthy meals to our children. We're very thankful for this program. You know, coming up next week, School Lunch Week in our parish, I'm sure most of you guys, if you haven't, you can just about get catfish five days a week if you plan it right. So just look at the menus, and certainly go by the lunchrooms. Many of them are decorated, and they're really fantastically prepared to see you. So at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Beth Heintz if she would read a resolution initiating National School Lunch Week in St. Tammany Parish.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. It's a great pleasure that I offer this resolution. Whereas the week of October 15th through 19th, 2012, has been named National School Lunch Week. And whereas school lunch, what's cookin', is the theme for this year's school lunch celebration. And whereas the national school lunch program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and has served our country for more than 60 years through advanced practices and nutrition education. And whereas the cafeteria staff across the St. Tammany Parish public school system serves approximately 10,400 breakfasts and 26,250 lunches each day. And whereas many parents, grandparents, school board members, state and local officials will be visiting our schools during this special week. And now therefore be it resolved that the St. Tammany Parish School Board publicly thanks the Student Nutrition Advisory Councils, Mrs. Pat Ferris, Supervisor of School Food Services, and her staff, and the school food service managers and technicians at each school for providing an excellent school food service program for our school system. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this board, with copies being sent to each school's principal, Student Nutrition Advisory Council and cafeteria staff, and to Mrs. Ferris and her staff as testimonial of this board's recognition of their outstanding endeavors. And I am so moved that we accept this resolution.
Move the unanimous second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Heintz. All right, next, we have School Bus Owners and Operators and Bus Attendants Appreciation Week. Ms. Kathy Amy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lube.
Superintendent Foles, board members in the audience. These are hard acts to follow, of course, when you have such great people that have been named so appropriately. But I also want to tell you about the school bus employees. We need you to know how wonderful they are. And I would like to reintroduce the two Assistant Directors, Donell Buell, I ask you to stand, and Sandy Masters are here as well. Remember that a lot of our bus drivers got up at 4:00, 4:30 this morning, so that's why you don't see them here tonight. In our society, there is a long list of unsung heroes who go unnoticed on a day-to-day basis. But now, the establishment of the School Bus Safety Week and the School Bus Operator and Attendant Appreciation Week, which is also April, I mean, April, I guess I'm rushing the year too fast, October 15th through the 19th, allows those individuals who ensure the safe transportation of thousands of our children in this parish to and from school every day, now they'll have the opportunity to receive recognition that they deserve. The St. Tammany Transportation Employees have an incredibly difficult task. They consist of driving large vehicles, managing their precious cargo, our students, and following safety precautions for an uneventful journey. However, they remain dedicated and diligent on their tasks. This significant week will promote school bus safety awareness and education, including practiced evacuation exercises. The schools are eager to design and implement activities to enhance student understanding and convey appreciation to the transportation employees servicing them. To kick off this special week, just a day early, a meeting with all transportation employees will be held tomorrow, October 12th. Last year, there were 682 bus operators, bus attendants, substitute bus operators and attendants, as well as activity drivers for this vital event that were present. This year, we are expecting more attendees. Two halls in the casting center will be utilized with the breakout session in a third hall. The agenda is bursting with relevant topics like laws, insurance issues, protocols, statistics, medical information pertaining to our students, and passenger management. Our own Superintendent, Mr. Trey Foles, will welcome our employees, and then introduce our keynote speaker, which is our own Board President, Mr. Jack Lube. We thank you in advance for your support and your expertise as well. It's important that we see that our Board President and our Superintendent support the employees, and that they are valued is the main thing. One, after that, one very interesting presentation will be presented by Sergeant Jeremy Church. He's the St. Tammany Parish Sheriff's Office Traffic Division Supervisor. Some of the other speakers will include Mr. Bill Brady, Mr. Kirk Gaspar, Mr. Tommy Norman, Loss Control Specialist with Arthur J. Gallagher and Company, Mr. Byron Williams, he's going to close it for us, Mr. Brandon Clanton, Mrs. Dorable Dangerfield, Mrs. Emily Homer, Mrs. Donell Buell with the attendance, and the school nurses. As you can see, we have a quality program ready for them tomorrow, and they are so deserving. We express gratitude to each one of our presenters for their sharing their expertise, and for validating the importance of our employees and the jobs they perform. Evaluations, of course, will be completed at the conclusion, and oftentimes, we get many suggestions for upcoming professional development, which is very important to meet their needs. This day is notable, and I'm real excited to say that, for it is the second assembly of all transportation employees in- of all transportation employees in a single location. Last year was our first, this is our second, and I'm very proud to say that. Because we are so large, that's part of the reason why they've not met. Our seminar is also successful, I can't go without saying this, is also successful due to our partnership we have with Director Louis Bouillon and his information technology staff, and Director Dr. Melody Swang and the Channel 13 staff, as well as Mr. Dale Rourke and the maintenance crew. I will always be indebted to them for their tireless jobs they do. I am proud to say Mr. Charles Harrell will read our resolution.
And it's a pleasure to offer this for such a fine group of people. Whereas a school bus cover approximately 31,000 miles daily in St. Tammany Parish, transporting approximately 28,000 public and non-public students, we have an excellent safety record. And whereas the position of school bus operator and school bus attendance require tremendous responsibility as they are required to safely maneuver through traffic while maintaining order on the bus and in the event of an emergency are looked upon for leadership and guidance. And whereas the State of Louisiana, the State Department of Education, and the St. Tammany Parish School Board are dedicated to the promotion of safety for our precious cargo in the most efficient and economical manner. And whereas primary factors for this excellent safety record of St. Tammany Parish buses can be attributed to the dedicated school bus operators and school bus attendants who spend considerable time and energy in ongoing training and maintenance, maintain skills and current, keep current knowledge of school bus laws and safety procedures through the continuing education as well as careful bus maintenance and thorough inspection. And whereas school bus operators and school bus attendants are a critical part of the public education process, making our schools accessible to all students throughout St. Tammany Parish. And therefore it be resolved that the members of St. Tammany Parish School Board hereby acknowledge and applaud the everyday efforts of all the school bus operators and school bus attendants in the school system and proclaim the week of October 15th through the 19th, 2012, as St. Tammany Parish School Bus Safety and School Bus Operator and School Bus Attendant's Appreciation Week. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this board with a copy being sent to all schools within the school system to post as a sign of appreciation to all school bus operators and school bus attendants. And I so move.
Okay, we have motions moved and unanimous second. Are all those in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Harrell. Next on the agenda, Red Ribbon Week, October 29th through November 2nd. Ms. Cheryl Araby, please.
Red Ribbon Week is being celebrated in St. Tammany Parish, October 29th through November 2nd. Studies have shown that young people who learn to say no to drugs are less likely to be involved with crime, delinquency, and other destructive behaviors. The purpose of the Red Ribbon Campaign is to present a unified and visible commitment toward the creation of a drug-free America. Each of our schools have exciting activities and programs planned for their students. We're also very happy that the organization Amplify Resources has been a huge driving force in promoting a healthy, drug-free development for our youth and families within our community. To accomplish this mission, they provide leadership, family life skills education, and prevention programs designed to reduce the illegal use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Amplify Resources assists our schools in obtaining resource materials to help them plan programs and activities at their schools. The Red Ribbon Week theme this year is the best me is drug-free. And tonight, we're happy we have Libby Cole, who's here and who has brought a couple of our students along, and so we'd like to ask her to come to the podium now.
Good evening, how are y'all tonight? I really want to thank the school board and everybody, all the staff, for everything that they've done to support us throughout the years. We used to be Pride of St. Tammany and now we're just, we've changed our name to Amplify Resources. A lot of people don't realize that we're the same organization, but we are and we do the same things. I've brought two of our Amplify Youth leaders with me tonight. This is Kira Blommer and this is Casey Johnson. And Kira's going to tell you a little bit about what we celebrate for Red Ribbon Week and why we celebrate it, and then Casey's going to tell you a little bit about why he's so proud to be part of Amplify.
We celebrate Red Ribbon Week in honor of Kiki Camarena, a DEA agent who was killed fighting the war on drugs. Every year during this week, we wear red ribbons to honor him and also those who are fighting the war on drugs today.
And I just wanted to say that being Amplify is something really special to me and I think it's really amazing to be with peers that all agree to have a positive influence on the community.
So Amplify is committed to being a resource for the youth and families of our community and we really do appreciate y'all recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
And now we'd like to ask Ms. Rowan Tipton if she would please read the resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Araby. I'm just proud to read the resolution for Red Ribbon Week. It's such a very important week for all of our children. Whereas the St. Tammany Parish School Board believes that community-based efforts which help it achieve its commitment to students should be recognized, and whereas the St. Tammany Parish School Board is acutely aware of the life-altering consequences associated with the use of alcohol and other illegal drugs, and whereas the St. Tammany Parish School Board agrees that a well-prepared, informed parent is an integral part of a child's education. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Tammany Parish School Board does hereby acknowledge the contributions made by the members of Amplify Resources, formerly known as Pride, in furthering our board's mission and does hereby express its gratitude for this organization's longstanding involvement with our students. Furthermore, be it resolved that this board does hereby proclaim the week of October 29th through November 2nd, 2012, to be Red Ribbon Week in all public schools in this parish. Furthermore, be it resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this board, that a copy of this resolution be sent to Amplify Resources, and that a copy be sent to and posted at each public school as indication of this board's declaration of Red Ribbon Week and its acknowledgement of the valuable contribution made by Amplify Resources and its members, both present and past. And I so move, we accept this resolution for Red Ribbon Week.
Moved and unanimous second. All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Tipton. Agenda items, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held September 13th, 2012. Moved and second. Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Approval of the minutes for the special meeting held September 20th, 2012. Moved and second. Comment, questions from the board? Comments from the public? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Approval of the minutes for the special meeting held October 4th, 2012. Moved and second. Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. We have some retirement resolutions, I'll read them all and we'll vote at the end, please. Linda B. Hayes, Abney Elementary, 34.55 years, 22.09 years in St. Tammany. James L. Smith, Creekside Junior High, 34.18 years, 27.18 years St. Tammany. Elizabeth M. Lanson, Harrison Curriculum Center, 39.07 years, 28.07 years St. Tammany. Philip E. Helm, Operation Jump Start East, 30.15 years, 15.29 years St. Tammany. Sharon K. Mayby, Pitcher Junior High, 41.64 years, 17.27 years St. Tammany. Peggy F. Newcom, Slido Junior High, 33.04 years, 21.29 years St. Tammany. Motion and second. Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to September 13th, 2012. Jan J. Keller, Farm Blue Junior High, 29.53 years, 24.03 years in St. Tammany. Georgia Stewart, Transportation Center, 13.02 years, all St. Tammany. Motion. Moved and second. Questions by the board? Comments from the public? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Certification of board members, Ray A. Alfred, Mary K. Belisario, Ronald Ron Betancourt, Michael J. Dermon, Charles T. Harrell, Elizabeth B. Hines, Neil M. Henigan, Willie B. Jeter, John C. Lamarck, Stephen J. Jack Loop III, Robin P. Mullet, James Ronnie Panks Sr., Peggy H. Sealy, Rowan V. Tipton, and Robert R. Bob Omack, in completion of one hour of training for 2012, presented on September 20th, 2012, as mandated by Louisiana Revised Statute 17.53. Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Loop. I do certify that the above-mentioned board members did complete the training as required on September 20th and mandated by Louisiana statutes as noted in the minutes.
Thank you. All right, we got, next we'll go through the announcements. Teacher of the Year Luncheon will be held on Wednesday, October 17th, at 11:30 a.m. at Trine Technology Center. Our committee as a whole meeting for Human Resources Education will be held on Thursday, October 18th, at 7:00 p.m. School Board Member Training in accordance with Act 705 will be provided at the committee meeting. Board members will receive one hour of credit. The committee meeting will be followed by a special board meeting for the purpose of a student expulsion appeal hearing. We would like to thank Mandeville High School Choral Ensemble for the entertainment at the reception before tonight's meeting. The students were under the leadership of Choral Director, Ms. Martha Atchison. We would like to recognize beautiful artwork in atrium walls furnished this month by art students from Mont Leon Junior High School, their art teachers, Ms. Tanya Hinden. I do want to let board members know that the lawsuit that we're a part of there for the Act II has been moved from October 16th to November 28th. So that just came out today, the lawsuit has been moved. And I certainly want to thank all the, everyone involved in our school system, teachers, parents, all of our Channel 13 crew, Louis, everybody there for the past two nights for the parent information sessions, they were such a tremendous success, you just don't know. And like I say, I've got calls today from other schoolboys wanting me to show them what we did because they want to do some information sessions themselves, so it's just been a tremendous effort. All right. Any other comments? All right. That's good. I need a motion there for us to go into executive session, please. Moved and second for us to go. All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Good night, everyone, meeting adjourned.